Well, we're gonna, we're gonna get started. So if you were listening to Vince Stevens, he had the rules for this forum. So be civil to one another, talk about your policies, do not criticize your opponents that are in the room. And also, we're going to give you 90 seconds. We have our timekeeper Kayla here, so she will keep us on track. We're gonna use the same format that Vince did. We're gonna start and go down the line and we'll rotate, so the next person will get the next question and so on. So we're not asking the same people the same questions all the time for starting. So we're gonna start all the way over here with Dave. By the way, the first time you get the microphone, tell us what you're running for, since they might not be able to read your on TV.
Okay, your first question is introduce yourself. Everybody, your experience in city government or public service?
Hello, thanks Steve. My name is Dave Pavelny. I am running for the mayor of the city of Columbus. I'm running to solve some of the problems that I see in our community. I am a seeker of truth and information and knowledge. I have a vision for our city. I've been the mayor for eight years, about seven and a half years ago. I then started a visioning session which got the community's input for what their vision is. I'd like to have that vision brought forward again and have the community's input be part of the direction of our representative democracy that I love so dearly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. My name is Scott Wendell and I'm running for the Columbus City Council. Since I was in about seventh grade, I've had a passion for serving people in my community and done so in many, many different roles, on many, many different charities and boards. I served three different communities as a police officer over the years. And I'm interested in running for city council because I have volunteered for the city in the past, both on the Public Works Advisory Board, Road Paving Subcommittee. I'm currently on the Planning Commission for the city. I also am currently sitting on the Ramsey County Business Advisory Board. They do good work with local businesses in Ramsey County to understand hazardous waste compliance and make sure that the businesses are able to do that and avoid any pitfalls with the state regulatory compliance. Running for city council again with no agenda, no personal reason other than it's just a passion to serve the people.
Thank you, Scott. My name is Ron Hanagraff. And I'm running for the position of mayor of Columbus. I've been a resident of Columbus for 46 years. I was a police officer in Forest Lake for 30 years. I was on the Planning Commission in Columbus in the late 90s. I came back to the Planning Commission in 2018 and was the chairman for four years. And I've been on the city council now for two years. My reason for coming back from the 90s back to the 80s had to be job-related. I was working nights and couldn't make a lot of the meetings. But another reason that brought me back was I observed something in 2017 where one of our citizens was escorted out of a meeting, and it was an elderly lady. And I just thought to myself, where are we listening to our community if we're kicking them out? The lady was at a public hearing, and I thought it's time to change government. And right now, I'm running because my opponent was gonna run on alone again, like he did four times when he was elected, so that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Allen. I'm running for city council for the city of Wyoming. People have asked me, well, what is getting you into politics at this stage of your life? And I rephrase that and take the word "politics" out and substitute the word "serving." This stage of my life, I'm asking myself, what am I doing to give back to the community versus taking? And I feel that this would be a great way to give back to the community by serving the people. I also serve with the local Wyoming Lions as president and zone chair. Currently, I'm on the EDA Board for the city of Wyoming and served on the past park board. Resident of Wyoming for over 25 years, and I am a landscape designer, sales and project manager for over 20 some years. And that has taught me the value of big discovery questions to find out what a need is. And I believe a need is never a need until it's stated. And then, once you have the stated need, then you can start solving the problem with options and looking at the cost of it. What I will do to bring to the city council is a fresh ideas, a fresh viewpoint, and a fresh set of eyes on current problems and future concerns. So Jeff Allen, running for the city of council for Wyoming.
Hi, I'm Lynda Nanco-Yager. I am running for the Wyoming City Council. I'd like to start by thanking the Forest Lake Chamber of Commerce for inviting me here today, inviting all of us here today, so we can get our message out to you. I'm a 35-year resident of the city of Wyoming. I am currently in my fourth term on the city council. I am running because I want to continue being an independent and objective voice for the people that I represent. When I'm not doing city council work, I am a two-time president of the Rotary Club. I believe in their Rotary model of service before self. And I tend to be accessible and I believe in giving of myself to the community I'm living in. I also am a longtime volunteer in a program called Chemists in the Library, where I do chemistry experiments with kids and just have a blast at it. I think I just hit it all. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynda. I'm Brett Onsted, running for a second term on city council in Wyoming. I have enjoyed serving for the last four years and feel like I've made a big difference in the city and trying to keep up communications with the residents of the city. And our big project right now is developing our public safety office. Unfortunately, the price has gone up in that, and we're still trying to get funding for that. And I've been working at the Capitol and at the national level to try to get funding for this building. And I want to see this project get through. It's one of the things that we really need in this city is a new public safety building. Thank you again. That's Brett Onsted for Wyoming City Council.
Thank you, Member Onsted. My name is Lisa Iverson. I am the mayor of the city of Wyoming. I am running unopposed. This is my fourth term, or I'll be into my fourth year as an elected official. Eight years ago, I had a vision for our city, and I'm proud to say we have accomplished most of those goals, which include a veterans memorial and history walk, a road plan which is updated yearly and it's based on wear and tear criteria. And we plan for future equipment needs and large purchases in five years into the future. With my leadership, we have become transparent with our meetings that you can watch on YouTube or live stream the night of our council. Most importantly, we give all our residents the opportunity to speak at our council meetings. I am running again because there is one thing I have not been able to finish, and that is our public safety building. Our public safety in the city of Wyoming is of utmost importance to me and to our community that they remain safe. So I have one more thing on my list to do, and that is to get that done. During that time, I'm up at the state Capitol. When I'm not doing my day job, I'm at the state Capitol. I'm talking to all the different senators and house representatives. I'm also talking to federal elected officials as well. So when I'm not doing any of that, you can find me live on Facebook, sharing all the great events Wyoming has to offer, including the MS-150, Stop Out Suicide, Touch a Truck, and even the scouts at the Pinewood Derby event. Thank you very much. I'm Lisa, mayor of Wyoming.
How will you connect with your constituents and get more public input from the average person in your community?
Yeah, excellent question and something I'm very passionate about, actually. Columbus does, like you said, a very good job in getting the information out there on public meetings after the fact, both on video. I'm kind of a geek. I like reading minutes, have read minutes for years and years and years. But I don't think we're doing enough. I think we can do a much better job by utilizing a lot of different modern technologies. And you may think that sounds a little weird coming from somebody in my generation. Reaching out to our citizens and informing them on things, especially things that are coming down from the state that we're required to address that the citizens may not know about. And our feedback, podcasts, certainly different types of meeting and social media out there. We're pushing that out to the citizens in a manner that's acceptable and user-friendly to them. That could even maybe be holding town meetings of some sort. I think it's important to do that and push that out.
Thank you, Scott. That's an interesting question. Sometimes I think you have to let the public or your constituents know that you're open. And when I say "open," that you're willing to listen. And I think at our meetings, when I listen, like before a planning commission, even before we start the issue, if it's somebody in there for a permit or a variance or something, I would get up and go greet them, explain what's gonna happen, the operation, the protocol, and ask them if they have any questions. So a lot of our constituents out there never really meet with the people who are running. So when they come in there, they don't know what's going on, and it's just like a public hearing. You gotta allow people to talk. And we never had, in any of my meetings, a time limit, which the previous, back in 2017, had a three-minute timeline. I think we gotta let them talk, and you gotta listen. And you're gonna learn. And if you don't learn, then you shouldn't even be in that office. And I think once you build that rapport, they have no problem calling you up. Last time I ran, I told them that I walk in the park at 5:30 in the morning. If you want to meet me, I'm there. And by God, a few of them stop and talk. So I think that's the way to be open. Thank you.
Yeah, so how would I connect with people? I think all these are great examples, is you have to be open to them. One thing is trust. You have to have their trust to come to you. You have to have their trust to have them share their ideas with you. And when I've been out door knocking so far, talking to people, literally going up with the people before and knocking on their door and introducing myself, it's amazing how many people are hospitality-friendly and really will like to talk to you about just life in general. Very few people, person, has talked to me really what I would call "politics." They just want to know who I am, what am I about? And then, in return, I ask them, who are you and what are you about? So going forward, if I do get elected for the city of council, I would extend that type of invitation, like, hey, I don't walk at the park, but I'd be happy to meet with you at McDonald's. Or I would be happy to talk to you after the meeting. A lot of times, the best brainstorming happens during the meetings. So just being one-on-one and talking to people, open-minded, and having the trust that they can confide in you are key issues.
So how have I been connecting with people? Ways. My phone number is out there, both my landline and more these days, my cellphone. Feel free to call me. I take long walks, at least twice a day. I have people talk to me while I'm walking and discuss their concerns with me. I mean, I even had one guy drive past me, do a yui, and come by to talk to me. I have a council Facebook page, Lynda Nanco-Yager, Wyoming, Minnesota City Council. On that page, in addition to posting pictures of the city, I post the agenda. I post a synopsis of what is on the agenda. You can go to the city website and find it. You can go to my Facebook page and find it. I also have a meeting memo I put out to people who asked to be on it, where I give a more in-depth synopsis of what's going on, just on what is in my packet. And on top of that, when I go door knocking, I do have people come up. I mean, yeah, Sunday, I had at least two people come up and express their concerns, which I then promptly relay to the city administrator, so that they can be dealt with in a timely manner. And once I know that there's action being taken, I can go back to the people and follow up with them, because one thing I believe is very, very important.
One of the ways, going out and talking with people, I found that there are some concerns. And one thing that people really do like is that things are published, our videos for council are put on YouTube. I've also, one of the ways I've been going out and meeting people is, we have a new dog park in town. Helpful in getting that put in place. And I use that dog park, and I've met so many people at that park that just want to talk dogs and politics, starting with dogs, ending with politics. And I just, I get so much information from people on that, and they really do love that dog park. It's been fun being on the campaign trail to see people say, you know what, I really love this city. I love this city. And I think we're doing a great job because of that. I really see the positive coming out when I'm out on the campaign trail. It's not quite as easy knocking on doors any year running, but you're still trying to meet people and talk with them, whether it be at the grocery store, at McDonald's, wherever. But it's a heck of a lot of fun. I hope to continue to do that.
... this in terms of getting out and talking to our residents. Before I was mayor, I was president of the Wyoming Area Business Association. And it was very frustrating not to be able to get the information needed for businesses that decided to run. When I became mayor, the biggest priority at that time was to make sure that we did become transparent, that we did have open meetings, that people were allowed to come and speak. We may have a three-minute limit, but I think most of you that we always go over that three minutes whenever they need to. We also allow our residents to speak on an issue when we're talking about that particular issue during the meeting. So we will allow input from our residents at that time. So I just believe that also when, before a meeting starts and we have a room full of people, I am that person shaking hands, introducing myself, talking to them what's gonna happen while... My personal cellphone is all over the place, so it's easy to get ahold of me at any time. And being mayor, I get a lot of emails, good and bad, and we're able to address them right away and get their concerns answered with respect. And I think that's the key point right there, is everything needs to be done with respect. And we have put that in place in Wyoming over the last eight years.
Thanks, Steve. I moved to Columbus in 1997, and the biggest thing that I noticed back, this is a little bit pre-website, that there was no website. So one of the first things I did, even before I was on the council, is I built a Columbus website for people to get the information with my own money and my own efforts. I think information via a couple ways. You can either be pushed out, or you can have people go get it. Well, pushing information to people is far more effective than expecting someone to go search through a website to find the information. So I'd be all over having these... Sending out the workshop minutes as well as the council minutes, even before they have been adopted. Because right now, there's a big delay before the last night's minutes are posted, because they have to be adopted. So I would be for putting them out in the preliminary fashion. I also am very available. I'll tell you right now, my phone number is 651-247-777. Call me anytime. I get very few people that are willing to take that step and actually call and discuss something. But the few people that have done that, it's been a great experience, and I've been able to answer the... As to the three-minute rule, when I was mayor for eight years, we did have a three-minute rule. We never really held constant to it, but you need to have some sort of structure, so that when someone goes, repeats themselves over and over and over again, like I could right now, but I'm not going to, you have to shut them off. So here you go, Steve, I'm shut off.
That's pretty good. Ron, this next question starts for you.
Recognizing that Minneapolis and St. Paul have a tremendous amount of crime, what are you currently doing, or what will you do to keep crime from creeping into your community?
Well, I think a lot of people out here probably don't know that we're the third landmass city, largest in the metro area. So we got 47.7 miles, square miles, bigger than Forest Lake, and it's bigger than... We currently have two deputies that we contract to Anoka County Sheriff's Department, and they work 12-hour days or periods. Right now, I'm really surprised that, being in law enforcement for 32 years, that the number of burglaries are down in our community, and we keep an eye on it. I'm the liaison to the sheriff's department, so I do talk to Jessica Slavik a lot about what's happening in our community. If anything's happening in our community, it's the idea of mainly traffic right now. We do have a casino, and a lot of people have incidents over there. That's pretty well down also. Loves trucking, doesn't have a lot, even though a lot of it is transits. And being in law enforcement, you remind me maybe a lot about community policing. And I think it's the same thing as a council person. You gotta be out in the community knowing what's going on, because some people may have something happen and don't think it's nothing, or I'm not gonna give it to the... or whatever. But that could add on to what the neighbor had down the block. But I think we're doing pretty good in our community right now. Is that to Bell?
Yeah, so earlier this morning, I believe a person mentioned that government has three folds, they believe, is roads, police, and education. And police, obviously, or public safety is a huge facet of government. So with that being said, I would support public safety. Obviously, I would echo and support the growth and building of the new public health building in Wyoming, or the public safety building in Wyoming. Support the police wholeheartedly. And I believe the city of Wyoming Police Department is doing a great job being out in the community with the national light out, being visible and accessible. I just recently see two, I believe they're doing, I'm paraphrasing it, but like a breakfast with a cop over in McDonald's in Wyoming, so you can go and meet them. So I think if police can be recognized as a resource versus, gosh, here comes the police, you know, they can be much more appreciated and then more utilized in our community. And I think the city of Wyoming is doing a great job by breaking down that barrier. So as a future city council, I would support any with the police department, with the new building, new police cars, or even new employees. So, thank you.
I read the police call sheets, or now it's on our website every, when it comes out. And I'm pleased to say, we do pretty well with, you know, keeping crime down and nothing too serious happening. And that's basically, we have a fantastic police force that is out and about. When I walk, I see them. I see them in the parks. I see them driving. I see them out in the community. And that, I think, really gives the town a feeling that they are safe and that we work cooperatively with our police. I mean, it's just wonderful. Thank you.
I've been a correctional officer for Ramsey County, the very area we're talking about, for the last 30 years. And I can see where crime has been and where it's going. And it's not going down. It's not going to soon. For our department, our police department, we're currently down one officer, and we're trying to hire. It's been difficult. I've talked at the national level with presidential campaigns to tell them, we're having a hard time hiring correctional officers, we're having a hard time hiring police officers. But the city of Wyoming has been doing a fantastic job of hiring really good officers. And I'm really glad that this is a great town to live in, a great town for our police to work in. But we need to keep making sure that we're affording the best. And we recently gave a COLA increase to our officers and a market adjustment, so that we can retain those officers. And I don't want our city just become a place that officers go to to learn how to become cops, and then we need to retain those cops that we've trained well. And that's what's gonna keep our city and our community safe. Thank you.
Mr. Onsted, very well stated. So I don't know how much I... Up for this. During my day job, I travel all over Minnesota, and I see cities that have invested in their police department, whether that's with a public safety building or... Them all the things that they need to be successful. And that is something that I've been promoting since I've been mayor the last eight years. Our community, our police officers are community-based, so they have learned to situations instead of force. I know that, I'm always very proud of what they do besides just being here in the city. They were recently at Dunkin' Donuts in Hugo, helping to promote Special Olympics. Exciting. Coffee with the cops is coming up as well. So they're also very engaged in this elementary school level and junior high and senior high. So very proud of our police and know that they do, and I will never let them down in terms of my belief on what they do, and continue to believe that they deserve the best possible from us.
Thank you. Your turn again.
Thank you. Well, as a conservative, I believe truly that police is one of the duties of government. I would, in Columbus, we have a very unique city, our five-acre minimums and very sprawling area. I think there's a lot of education that has to happen in Columbus. It's great to have the police. We do need to get our CSO officer back, but we do need to educate the public on simple things like, don't leave your garage door open. Make sure that your fire detectors and all that stuff's working. But, you know, mainly, we gotta make sure that we protect the... So that they can protect themselves, because Columbus is five, six, seven minutes away from, for no matter how many cops we have on duty. The other thing is the roads. So, you know, the roads, the safety of the roads is really... How they're designed. And there's a lot of design flaws in Columbus, where a lot of our roads come through at a crazy angle, and they don't meet at 90-degree intersections. So that needs to be fixed as well. Speed limits are drastically down to limits that are creating a false sense of security that people, it's 30 miles an hour on a road, where they think, oh, well, now I can push my stroller and do my jogging, and it's really not safe. So I would review that a little bit. And we gotta get some trails in Columbus. Being a fiscally conservative guy, I am for trails, because trails are the things that allow people to communicate and enjoy the community. Thanks, Scott.
Yep, thanks, Dave. And Steve, thank you. You hit on two of my favorite subjects, so it makes it easy on me. Obviously, being a former police officer, I have... For public safety. I also have some inside information on law enforcement in Columbus, having been an Anoka police officer and knowing very well a lot of the deputies who have served Columbus, going way back, maybe some of Johnson. I can tell you that in Anoka County, at one time, that Columbus is where your veteran police officers wanted to go, because it was quiet. And about the safety of, of Columbus. We are not Minneapolis. We are not St. Paul. Law enforcement is in crisis. St. Paul is hurting so bad for cops that they have disbanded all of their specialty just to cover the streets. That's not the case up in Columbus. And our citizens that are moving to Columbus, a lot of them are trying to escape that, that crime area. So, good news for the citizens of Columbus. Your city is safe, very well by the Anoka County Sheriff's Department. And I know from being kind of a geek in, in political science and following Columbus, that there was a, a time when we looked into having a department. I will tell you right now, just an entry level, boots-on-the-ground police officer, because law enforcement is in crisis, is making over $100,000 in the Twin Cities metropolitan area. And then add on a 1.7 for benefits, that's expensive. We are saving money by contracting with, with Anoka County and it's a win-win for all of us.
All right, we are almost out of time, so we're going to give a 30-second. And if you have, want a little direction on your closing statement, maybe it can be, what is the major issue facing your community and why are you running to fix that problem and how are you going to fix it? So we're going to start with you.
Yeah, thanks Steve. Thanks Steve. The major issue facing the city of Wyoming, I go back to my days as landscape design, sales, B2B sales, is discovery questions. So right now, I don't have a specific concern with the city of Wyoming. I think it's a great place to live, but I would continue to seek out asking questions as I'm door knocking. And once I get on the city council, if it's God's will and that I would continue to listen to those concerns. What I bring to the city council again is a fresh set of eyes and a fresh set of viewpoints on subject matters.
So why should, and what makes me stand out? One quality that makes me unique is my independence and my habit of thoroughly researching all the matters that come before council. I ask lots and lots of questions before the meetings, during the meetings, sometimes after the meetings. And finally, when I'm in there, when I'm on council, I will continue to speak up for those in the community who feel like they don't have a voice at city hall. Thank you.
Our primary concern right now in Wyoming is, is making sure that we build our public safety building. Our police department is two, three miles out of town and it needs to be. We also need to work on developing our industrial complex and modes of transportation in the city. I really think that we need to work on our trails. We need to make this city a bigger and brighter place.
So I've already talked about our public safety building. What I'm going to talk about that many don't know, as a mayor of Inshasago County, the previous four years, I've been working with a large coalition of mayors throughout Minnesota who are working to stop state-elected officials from legislation taking away our rights as a city to plan housing developments in our community and place it in the hands of the state. Unfortunately, this week, this work is going to come this year because there's more and more support on the state level and we can't have that. The cities are ours.
Thanks Steve. For mayor, to keep Columbus rural. The five-acre minimums, the big thing for me, always has been, always will be. Get the vision of the people, implement their vision, be their representative for the people, treat them with respect and show the, the, show the morals and principles that are dear to me, explain them to the people and let the people vote for someone with the experience that I've had over eight years.
Okay, thanks Dave. Couple things, I, I think Columbus is in a good place and we've got some excellent leadership on the city council. Two things, number one, Fiscal Disparities Act. We're paying into this program to the state and we're not getting our fair share back. If we want to continue to keep our tax rate down, which we're doing, that's one program current city council members are working on right now to get our fair share. The other thing is, is we don't have the population to qualify for our percentage of sales tax. So we're paying into that and not getting that well. Those are two things that we can attack to keep our taxes low in Columbus.
Thank you Scott.
Well, I have to say that Columbus is running very smoothly. Our tax levy is the lowest in Anoka County, townships and cities, and we plan to do that again this year. But I think we all have something in common here and it happens this Friday. It's homecoming for the Rangers. And we all have kids or grandkids there, so go Rangers, beat the ponies.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Let's give them a round of applause.